So we're going to talk about the scientific method today. So hopefully these first two questions will be pretty easily answered after today's lecture. And then the second half is risk assessment and adaptation. Question number 2.2, identify one geoengineering possibility. In one sentence, describe how it works. In a second sense, describe a possible consequence or problem. So we briefly talked about some geoengineering solutions or ideas on Wednesday. So you can have a look at that lecture. I posted it to YouTube. Or simply look up a geoengineering idea using Google or whatever. Just type in geoengineering, geoengineering, you'll see several ideas. And I'm not looking for a massive essay on this at all. Just like, here's one idea, here's how it works. Here's a potential problem with it. 2.1 is, I want you to actually look at the IPCC Intergovernmental Panel for Climate Change. Assessment Report Number Five, Working Group Two, blah, 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 blah. Don't worry about all those words I just used. Actually, look at their Risk Assessment and Adaptation Report. And so I have it linked on Canvas. So I'll show that now. Internet, there it is. Here's the internet. Here's our Canvas page. So if you go to Home and you go to Homework Three, Climate Change, and click it, you'll see this link here, IPCC Assessment Report Five, Working Group Two, et cetera, et cetera. It's in English. So you have a click on that. And on the homework, you're supposed to assess, I believe it was Asia, that's what I typed on Monday. Let me see if I was right. Yeah, referred to summary for policymakers report. Assessment Box SPM Two, Table One, Asia. In a paragraph or two, briefly describe some key risks for Asia that Asia will face this century with respect to climate change. So if we go to that report, do I have it up somewhere? Here's Adobe, let's share that. Well, I can certainly get it from the internet because I have it linked here. Oh yeah, I have it open on this other page. Yeah, so if you go to zoom in on this, if you go to, this is the thing that you can download from Canvas or get it directly from the IPCC. And if you go to SPM Point Two, Table One, then there's all these different broad scale regions, continent sized regions that we again talked about Wednesday. And you'll want to scroll down to Asia. And I, and have a think about some of these key risks and how to adapt, how Asia may adapt to them and various risks. So just, it's just forcing you to have a look at this document and, and think about it critically. And just again, not a huge essay, just a few sentences that shows me that you had a look at this and you, you thought about it. So the homework's super easy, just requires you to dig around a little bit on the internet for geoengineering ideas and then open up this document. The rest of it will be on the scientific method, which we will do now. This one, go back to this slideshow, open up my chat. All right. Oh yeah, the Kurtzgesagt, I don't know if that's how you say that. Video is great idea for geoengineering. That's again linked on Canvas. All right. So the scientific method. One of the best descriptions of the scientific method I've come across was, is in the Feynman lectures. He was a physicist, a particle physicist in the, in the last century. He did all sorts of other things too. But he has these really easily digestible lectures. And one of them was on the scientific method. And in that lecture, he says, this is basically what science is. It's three steps. You guess a new law. You just make a guess about nature. You compute the consequences of that guess. And so that's where you say, well, I think nature behaves this way according to this mathematical formulation or along these different lines of, of movement. And so then you say, well, if it does behave that way, let's compute the consequences of that for something new that may, may happen. And then you compare that computation to what actually happened in nature. And if it agrees, well, your idea stands. And if it doesn't agree, then the idea is shot down. It's wrong. And in his words, it doesn't matter how beautiful the idea is or who you are. It's wrong. And that's how science moves forward. And that's, that's question number one in, in the homework. It doesn't move forward by proving things right. It moves forward by proving things wrong. This has been seen again and again in the advancement of sciences. I'm, by training a planetary physicist. And so one of the clearest displays of this that I've come across is the, the movements of the planets themselves. If you look at the night sky, you can watch the planets kind of dance back and forth across constellations over the course of a year. And they, they move in these kind of patterns and they fall back onto themselves. That's what the Greek word planet means. It means wanderer. And so these were wandering stars. All the other stars were fixed in the celestial sphere. And the planets would move, move across that background of the celestial sphere. And so 500, 600 years ago, people would trace those patterns out. And they'd get these, over decades, they'd get these beautiful spirograph patterns that they'd begin to, to draw. And each, each planet had a different spirograph it would make, spiral graph that it'd make. And then they started doing really beautiful things, amazing things. They would attach those spirographs to different octave ranges and different musical notes. And say that each planet actually plays a song and has a, has a different melody. And it was called the so-called music, the music of the spheres. So it's this real great description of the planets, but it didn't make any predictions. It wasn't, there was no guess there. There's no guess of a law or a guess of a, of, of a general concept that said how the planets move. Except maybe that each planet makes a song, but you couldn't predict what song the next planet to, to be discovered would make. So it's purely observational, just by all the, you know, work and effort that went in, went into it. And so it wasn't really till Kepler and then Newton that there is actual laws being proposed. Oh, perhaps the planets orbit their host star in a period that goes as a cube root to, or the second root, square root to, to the cube of the distance from the star. For example, that's one of Newton's laws. And so now this was an actual testable thing. And if you look at another planet and say, does the same formula hold true? Yes, it does. And so it was, now it's something where there's a law, there's a guess, and you can make an observation. And that, that guess continues to hold true. It cannot be proven wrong. And so then, at that point, it goes from a fact to a theory. The theory of, you know, planetary motion. I'll get into the difference between what a theory is and a fact in a second. And so that was fine and good until this last century, the 20th century. Early in the, in the 1900s. People were measuring the movement of Mercury and they discovered that it, it was, if the time it took to go around the sun wasn't quite right. It didn't, it didn't match these laws that Newton had established 200 years earlier. There's something, something missing, something wrong. And so they thought, then the next guess was there might be another planet, Planet X or something that's influencing Mercury and messing up its orbit. And that's why it's the time, the timing of it is, is a little bit off. And it wasn't until Einstein's Treaties on General Relativity that, that space and time is actually curved by energy and matter that, that Mercury's orbit began to make sense. And so Newton's laws were proven wrong by Einstein's Theory of General Relativity. And that's how the science again progressed. It wasn't something new being proved right. It was something else being proved wrong. And so again and again, we see in scientific thought and progression, the way to advance science forward is to make a guess, compare with nature. And that, that will stand as theory, as, as the science of the day until it can be proven wrong by a new, better guess. And the reason I'm bringing all this up is because it, it's directly related to theories of global warming and how we make guesses, how we collect facts, how we collect data. And the best evidence and the one thing we can't prove wrong so far today is that CO2 is a greenhouse gas that traps infrared radiation and it re-radiates heat back to the planet. And the more CO2 we have in the, in the atmosphere, the warmer the planet will get. Okay, so let's, let's explore some more ideas about the scientific method. And I promise to make this more interactive in a sense, and also in a second. So even though there's just these three steps, guess, compare, and guess, compute the consequences, and then compare to nature. The act of becoming a scientist, the act of becoming a good scientist is learning how to make really good guesses. Learning how to actually conduct experiments so that we can compute the consequences of those guesses. And learning a lot about nature. So it's becomes more readable to readily comparable to nature. So a contentious theory, still today, several hundred years later, is evolution. The idea that species mutate all the time due to minor errors in genetic reproduction. And these mutations either render a individual of the species better adapted or maladapted to their surroundings. And these better adapted members of the species are more likely to reproduce and therefore carry those mutations forward. And over geologic time, this can lead to the proliferation of all life that we've, we see on the planet. So that's the guess. The guess is that mutations lead to maladaptions or beneficial adaptations that, that promulgate the species forward. It's a good guess because it's pretty definitive and it's a testable guess. And so we can see this happening throughout the fossil record. We can see microevolution happen all the time in things like fruit flies, things that reproduce relatively quickly. And even, you know, decadal or century long evidence of migration or evolution. When we look at, there was these, these birds in England, for example, during the coal era of the 1800s and 1900s. They were easily preyed upon because they stood out. They stood out against the, the sooty background. And then over time, those, those birds evolved to have a silk gray feathers and they were no longer preyed upon. So just different, different examples like that. The counter guess would be creationism to evolution. And so there's two branches of creationism. There's hard creationism, which says that the earth is 6,000 years old. And that's a very definitive guess. And in that sense, it's a good guess. Good guesses are something that are testable. And what makes us good, good guess is something that's definitive because therefore it's testable. And so the definitive guess is that the earth is 6,000 years old based on counting the generations in the Bible. And the world was created in seven days by an omniscient, omnipresent, omnipotent benevolent God. And we can compute the consequences of that guess and say, well, therefore we should never find any evidence that the earth is more than 6,000 years old. Well, we find evidence all over the place that the earth is more than 6,000 years old. We see it in carbon dating, radioactive dating. We see it in the stratigraphic record. You just look at something like the Grand Canyon, realize it's going to take more than 6,000 years to build something like this. So that's, therefore, hard creationism doesn't work because it fails that second step. Computing the consequences and comparing it to nature, the second and third step. The other idea is soft creationism. And that's that, there's this, there's this, some grand maker that set the universe into motion. And then their hands were removed and they no longer interact. And so things like evolution can occur. Cosmic evolution, stellar evolution, biological evolution. And that there's just some grand maker that, that set the rules, set the game up. And then only observes or maybe interacts every once in a while. That may be true, but it's not a scientific guess because it's not testable. There's no experiment or idea that we can create to test that out. And so therefore it falls outside the realm of science. It's something that science can't really participate in. So if you harbor that idea, that's fine, but it can neither be proved correct or incorrect. And so therefore it's, it's not even science. And so it's something that, yeah, science, science is not interested in pursuing further because they can't use the scientific method to, to find that out. And so that, that brings me to the second topic that vague guesses are not science. And therefore not pursued by it. Doesn't mean that they may or may not be right, but they're just, they're not, they, they can't be built upon. They can't be proven wrong. And it just doesn't work. So maybe a less contentious example of a vague guess would be psychoanalytical theory, like from Sigmund Freud. And so that's the idea that, you know, we have this ego and underneath that is an id and above that is a secret, superego. We're still on the first slide. Yeah. So there's this idea that there's these different voice, these different entities in our head. I, id and superego and ego playing with how we react to the world, relate to others and how we view ourselves and our relationships. That's another vague idea and it's, it's not testable. And worse yet, it can move in multiple directions. So, you know, maybe, maybe there's a sociopath or psychopath that's cannot maintain any relationships, possibly dangerous. Goes to a psycho, psychoanalyst and they say, well, you know, the reason you are the way you are is because your mother never loved, loved you. And the patient then says, well, you know, that's not true at all. My, my mother suffocated me. She loved me too much. She would never leave my side. She wouldn't let me play with friends on my own. She never let me date anybody. And then the psychoanalytical theorist would say, oh, well, that's the problem. Your, your mother stifled you. Your mother loved you too much. And so these, these vague ideas can, can work in both, both senses. And therefore it's, it's not science because you can't, you can't compute a law. You can't compute a, a consequence from these, these vague ideas. Another vague idea might be astrology, like horoscopes in the newspaper. Say something like, you know, you will have, your event today will end up, the event today that you're worried about will end up being less stressful than you originally thought. You know, like you read that in the newspaper or something or on your iPhone. And then you start going about your day and then you, so you have a dentist appointment. Okay, that's what you're worried about. You go to the dentist and it turns out you get the cleaning, you don't have a cavity. And you're like, oh, the horoscope was totally right. I was worried about this. And now, you know, I was worried about it and it ended up not being nearly as stressful as it, as I thought it'd be. Great. I believe in astrology, astrology. The movements of the planets have something to do with my dental appointments. Or you go there and turns out you do have a cavity, but it doesn't require a crown. It's just a small filling. And you're like, oh yeah, so the horoscope was totally right. I was worried about this and it ended up not being that stressful. So it's, it's not that big a deal. And so if you buy into it, you're going to believe it no matter what. Yeah, somebody in the chat mentioned that's how mediums work too. Yeah, so they, they, they present something very, very vague. And then they wait, wait for their audience to pick up on that clue and then, then feed the information back to them. So it's really important to have a very concrete guess. So the concrete guess with global warming is that there are various species of gases that are transparent to the visible light and opaque to infrared light. And they will trap heat on, in the earth's atmosphere. It's very concrete guess, easily testable, easily provable. And so far we haven't come up with a better guess. And so that's what stands. Okay, so we've talked about what makes a good guess, what makes something testable. I'm about done here and then we can have a little bit of fun talking about other, other ideas. So does the concrete guess have to be quantifiable? No, but it really needs to be testable. So one, one concrete guess that I quite like, and I think is intuitively correct, but it's, it's can't, we can't really test it, or at least we can't test it yet, is the concept of evolutionary psychology. So there's this idea that, you know, physical traits are evolved from various adaptations and maladaptations and mutations. But there's, so there's this commensurate idea that psychological behavior is as well. And so there's some really good ideas with it, like, so evolutionary psychology is the idea that, yeah, psychological traits are have genetic precursors and it's something that we can inherit. And there's some very common things across humanity, like, you know, infanticide is generally regarded as a terrible thing. And the desire to take care of young humans, like young humans look really cute to all of us. The desire to cooperate, the desire to want to feel part of a group. So there's a lot of these, these psychological traits that are conducive to the propagation of species and to our survival. And so it's probably right. And you can see this across all cultures, other things like emotional mirroring, you know, you go to any culture and like a smile means a smile and a frown means a frown. And so there's all these, these psychological behaviors that are probably evolutionarily related. The problem with that idea though, is that we can't test it. We don't have time machines. We can't go back 200,000 years and see the same behavior in early hominids. We can't we can't experiment on people, that's wrong. So you can't isolate groups and see how they, they change over the next 30, 40, 60 years or something. And so that, that'd be one idea of a, a concrete guess that, that's difficult to test, difficult to quantify, but probably right. But yeah, there's, there's, it doesn't have to be purely quantifiable in the way that like planetary motions are. So once we get into the, the life sciences, things get a little less quantifiable. But we can still perform statistics and continue to collect data and compare, compare our guesses with nature to see how well they fall into a scientific theory. And so that's the other thing. So there's this problem with the idea of a theory. People will say global warming is just a theory. Well, a theory is the pinnacle of scientific truth. I think semantics have confused that. So some people say like, well, that's just a theory. They're, they're using the word theory wrong. In science, a theory is a collection of facts, laws and data that all work together to support one theory, like general relativity or evolution. But then in colloquial language, language will say like, you know, I've, I have a theory that I'm gonna, I don't know, gain some weight if I keep on eating too much candy this, this holiday season or something. Well, that's, that's not a theory. That's actually a guess. That's like the lowest, lowest bar of scientific thought. Then you need to take that guess and compute consequences and compare it to nature, et cetera. Okay. Let's see what else is going on. So the more you study things like global warming or any scientific expertise, the better you get at making guesses. The better you get at designing experiments and the better you get at comparing it to nature. And so that's one thing that's becoming frustrating with the political machinations associated with climate change is people present new guesses to try to disqualify a climate theory. And it's stuff that's already been thought about long ago or such a silly guess. Scientists don't even bother, bother to counter it. And then these guesses, you know, propagate on the internet and other places and, and become frustrating. And so Richard Feynman, who I have on this display has a joke about, you know, how bad guesses get in the way of, of good science. And he said that, say you, say you just bought a house and you're in the basement and you find a safe. You know, like, I wonder what's in the safe. I want to crack it. I want to look in it. So you spend the weekend and you have a stethoscope and you're twiddling the numbers, trying to, trying to crack the key. And then, you know, your brother comes over with six pack of beer or something and says like, have you tried 10, 20, 30? You're like, it's, it's a terrible guess. No, bro, I haven't tried 10, 20, 30. I already know the first number is two. Secondly, it's a five digit combination. So your three numbers aren't even going to work at all. Quit wasting my time, that sort of thing. And so, yeah, throughout the internet, there's all these bad guesses associated with climate change or little counter examples. Recent one I came across was, well, actually it's part of the ocean's cooling. How do, how do you explain that, climate scientist? And so then I, you know, I looked at what part of the ocean this individual was talking about. And they were talking about the south, east coast of Greenland. Well, of course that part of the ocean's cooling because the Greenland ice cap is melting and putting all this fresh cold water into the ocean right there, which is directly related to climate change. And so there's, there's all sorts of things like that. And I feel like a general better understanding of these, of the scientific method would prevent some of that. Let's get into this lecture a little bit. Unless you all want to, while I'm doing this lecture, we can have a little fun. You can give your own theories and ideas. And we can say whether it's science or not. One of my favorite recent ones is simulation theory that we all live in a simulation. And the mathematician from Cambridge two years ago said that it's, it's infinitely more probable that we live in a simulation than we don't. And his idea was basically, here's a collection of scientists and mathematicians said that there's, there's only one true world. That true world can build computer simulations and those computer simulations can build computer simulations. So therefore there's an infinite number of computer simulations and only one true world. So the likelihood that you're in the computer simulation is much, much higher than the, than you're in the true world. It's fine, still just be nice to each other and do good work. I don't think it'd be terribly different than if you actually were in the real world, who knows? Okay. Somebody says, checkmate, Alex Jones. Okay, yeah, so that's a, thank you for bringing up Alex Jones. So the other thing about science, you can't prove some things impossible. And people use that stupidly all the time. So like, you know, you know, someone would say about like UFOs, well, you can't prove there aren't aliens. Yes, I cannot prove there are not aliens, but that doesn't mean that there are aliens. You can't, you can't prove an impossibility. And so that whole segment of like the Joe Rogan big if true kind of thing. Yeah, of course it's big if it's true, but that doesn't mean that it's true. You can't prove an impossibility. I have a theory that teachers who are younger tend to be more empathetic towards students. That may be true. That probably has something to do with evolutionary psychology and being in different peer groups and generational classes. I have a theory that baby boomers are the least empathetic generation, but maybe that's just me. Okay, um, let's get into this a little bit. So here are some bad guesses for So here are some bad guesses for global warming. I've seen on the internet in recent times, and I've even heard from my uncle, maybe you all have an uncle too. But he's he's been saying that a solar minimum is coming, and that that's going to lead to global cooling. We're we're not going to enter global warming. There's going to be this global cooling because of a solar minimum. Yes, it's true, there's a solar minimum coming. It's starting this year, actually. So every eleven years or so, the magnetic field of the sun changes from north to south. And that creates this minimum of so sunspot sunspot activity, which lowers the amount of energy from coronal mass ejections and other things reaching the Earth, and therefore would lower its temperature. But it only lowers the energy on a milliwatt scale. And so so many other climate effects completely, completely dominate. You have experienced in your life one or two solar minimums already, and you didn't die. So this idea that solar minimum is going to cause global cooling is is wrong. This graph just shows different sunspot sunspot cycles over time. And so, yeah, we're entering another minimum right now. So this idea that the sun's energy is responsible for climate change or responsible for climate cooling is partly correct, but it there's so many other effects that completely dominate. And so this chart here shows sun's energy reaching the top of the atmosphere in watts per meter squared. So we have this change of about one watt over these eleven-year cycles. And then this is the global surface temperature average over time. And you can see that it continues to trend upwards, and it almost has this stair stepping effect. And the stair stepping effect comes from these sunspot cycles. So we climb, we have global warming, and then we go flat as we reach a minimum. And we have global warming, then we go flat, then we have global warming, and we go flat. And so anytime somebody says like, oh, we haven't had global warming for like two or three years, they're just focusing on one of these solar minima. And they're going to do it again the next two years. They're going to say like, see, we haven't had any global warming in 2020 and 2021. Global warming is over. No, we're just in a sunspot minimum. It'll come back in with vengeance as soon as we get out of the minimum. Another idea, people say, well, we don't have global warming. It's just cosmic ray energy from space. Yes, we get energy from other stars, not just our own, or from stars that have catastrophically gone supernova. But if you compare the global surface temperature in red to cosmic ray activity in blue, they're not correlated. So the the warming that we're experiencing on Earth has to be caused by something besides cosmic rays. Another idea that you'll hear is it's just natural variations. We're coming out of a little ice age or something. The river Thames used to be frozen. People always used to say that back in the 1700s. And so therefore, we're just coming out of a little ice age, and that's what the warming is associated with. And so you climate scientists map things like the actual observed temperature. That's in this line here to natural temperature and natural residual temperature. So what is natural, natural residual? These are residual is just a a longer time step. And the natural is what is calculated to occur based on natural phenomena occurring with Earth, things like sunspot cycles, cosmic ray, volcanic activity, Melankovitch cycles, which are orbital cycles, et cetera. As soon as you add in anthropogenic forcing, so the release of greenhouse gases from anthropogenic activity, anthropogenic just means man-generated, human-generated, then the the anthropogenic plus natural variations curve is mapped very well onto what we actually observe. Another idea you hear is it cooled mid-century, even though CO2 levels were climbing a lot. So there's this during and following World War Two, there is this, there's this period where the temperatures didn't climb that much. But if you actually look at the CO2 emissions, they stagnated during World War Two because there was a bit of a economic catastrophe occurring then. The other reason is because air travel was rapidly growing in the in the 50s onwards and these release reflective particles in the stratosphere that slightly reduce warming. In fact, right after nine eleven, for those three days when flights were shut down across the entire world, there was a brief uptick in increased solar radiation reaching the surface of the planet. Let's see what's going on in the chat. The universe goes on forever, then there's a hundred percent chance and there's a world just like ours out there now or will be in the future. Yeah, most cosmologists, not cosmetologists, but cosmologists agree that there's like ten to the 500 universes. And so there's probably millions of universes just like this one with some slight variation. But again, that's that's one of these, it's not, it's a concrete guess, so it's a good guess, but it's untestable. Like, we can't get out of this universe to actually run an experiment to see if there's other universes. Please be nice to these climate change annihilists. They accidentally stood outside for too long in the abnormally hot weather and their brains fried a little bit. Funny. Okay, let's keep on going with a few other things. Yeah, so the problem with the the guesses from the climate denialists is they they either haven't read all the literature or the prevailing thoughts from climate scientists, or they purposely have read it and then are trying to find little little holes in the armor or something. And and they continue to change the the goalposts and continue to change things. And they leave out a bunch of facts and a bunch of data and a bunch of ideas, and then just focus on some little thing like, oh, the ocean's cooling in this one little spot next to Greenland, for example. It'd be much more helpful if they said, instead of just trying to break it, say, well, what's your guess? Give us a real guess, and then we can try to break your guess. That's how science actually progresses. All right. So here's a good guess. It's from it's it's CO2 from fossil fuels. So that's that's a concrete guess. There's more CO2 in the atmosphere, and it's coming from fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are made out of carbon and hydrogen. When we light the carbon on fire, it combines with oxygen and makes carbon dioxide. We can perform that experiment really easily. We can predict how much it will make, and we can test how much it actually made. Works stoichiometry. You add one carbon to two oxygens, it makes one CO2. And so when we estimate how CO2 will affect warming, we can again plot this curve I already showed you that shows natural volcanic and solar variations, and then anthropogenic plus natural, and then it actually matches the temperature curve quite nicely. But my favorite, favorite evidence that that it's fossil fuel related is not this slide, but the following one. This slide shows CO2 concentrations in red. This is observed in the atmosphere over the last 300 years from ice core measurements and direct measurements. And this is total CO2 emitted by burning fossil fuels in blue, and it matches very well. And so that's that's where it's coming from. This little excess here in the end is extra release, natural releases from land use changes. But this is my favorite bit. So all correlation does not equal causation. No, but you can do a multivariate analysis. But additive properties still work. CO2 plus CO2 equals more CO2. This is my favorite line of evidence for anthropogenic climate change, man-made climate change. And this is the idea that it's fossil fuel related. And what am I destroying? What am I showing here? This is concentrations of delta thirteen isotopes in carbon. So all the elements have multiple isotopes. What's an isotope? Well, an element is depend on how many protons it has. That determines the element, whether you have carbon or oxygen or hydrogen or something. But they can have various numbers of neutrons. These are other subatomic particles within the nucleus that that determine its mass. And so carbon comes in three flavors. Carbon twelve, six protons, six neutrons. Carbon thirteen, seven neutrons, six protons. Or carbon fourteen, that's eight neutrons, six protons. That's line line number one. Carbon has three different flavors. Line number two, life is lazy. Life uses its resources with expending the least amount of energy as possible. And so when plants build their their stocks out of carbon, they pull CO2 out of the atmosphere, and they preferentially select CO2 that's made with carbon twelve. Why? It's easier to to move electrochemically throughout their cells. It's easily to easier to manipulate and build ATP and other lignans and things to make the plant. And so if you measure the amount of carbon twelve to carbon fourteen or carbon twelve to carbon thirteen in plants, you'll find that it's lighter than atmospheric air, that plants are preferentially enriched with with carbon twelve. Animals that eat plants reduce the amount of carbon twelve even further. And so cows will have a lower ratio of carbon thirteen to carbon twelve than than the corn and grass that they eat, because cows are life and life is lazy. And so the cows build their cells out of the lighter parts that they they eat out of the plants. The higher you go up in the food chain, the the more enriched they are in carbon twelve with respect to carbon thirteen. So you take like an apex predator, like a wolf or something, and they will have lower carbon twelve or higher carbon twelve to carbon thirteen ratios within their within their cells. So you can actually pluck someone's hair and determine whether or not they're on a paleo diet or vegan diet. A vegan will have more carbon thirteen. Yeah, I actually have a good friend of mine that works for one of those alphabet agencies in intelligence. And he tracks people with their carbon isotopes and their oxygen isotopes. Where you drink your water will determine your your oxygen isotopes. So this is a thing. So oil, gas, it's made out of dead stuff, right? Dead diatoms, dead algae, dead phytoplankton. And so if we burn dead stuff for hundreds of years, we will probably change the carbon twelve to carbon thirteen ratio within the atmosphere. And that's exactly what's happened. The ratio of thirteen to twelve has decreased over time as we emit more and more fossil fuels into the atmosphere. So this is a guess. Burning fossil fuels will lower the delta thirteen carbon ratio within the atmosphere. We compute the consequences of that. Okay, if we burn fossil fuels, but if we burn this much fossil fuel, we'll change the ratio by this much. We compare that to nature, and it holds true. Therefore, that guess has not been proven wrong. It stands. And there you go. Fossil fossil fuels release CO2, causes climate climate change, and people burnt the fossil fuels. So therefore, climate change is caused by humans. It's anthropogenic climate change. It's not natural variations. And it is warming the planet. And finally, I'll leave you with the narcissist creed. So this is what a lot of the oil majors have been espousing the last thirty, forty years. ExxonMobil knew about global warming back in 1981. Shell shortly thereafter. But this is basically what they recite. It's not happening. If it does happen, it isn't bad. And if it is bad, it's not that big a deal. If it is a big deal, it's not our fault. That's kind of where they are right now. There's like, well, we just we just made the drugs. You're the one using them. It's not our fault. Like, if we stopped, then the economy would fall apart, like. This is just how it is. And then if it is our fault, didn't mean it. And if we did mean it, you deserved it. So right now, we're somewhere in this this chain of capitulation and wrangling. The science is real. And that's it. Okay, any other crazy conspiracy theories? Someone to see if they're scientific guess or not?
Have you heard of the movie GeoStorm?
GeoStorm? What's that? Like, that's like a big I think it's like a coronal mass ejection from the sun can can knock out all the
It's this movie where the world got overcome by climate change. And to fix it, they sent all of these satellites into space, this huge network. And these satellites have the ability to control the weather. And so like they fix climate change, but then someone hacks them. It's a very good movie.
I'll have to check that out, especially given my line of work, just for fun. Yeah, so related to that is HARP, this idea that governments can cause hurricanes or different like weather phenomena. The amount of earth energy in a hurricane is like ten to the eighteen joules or something. So it's like, what? A hundred thousand Hiroshima bombs simultaneously? We don't have, we don't have that much energy. We can't do that. But it's kind of fun. Oh, yeah, 5G. Yeah, 5G is basically just kind of like low intensity microwaves. It's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt us. Mandela Effect. That's this is a weird one, like the Berenstein versus Berenstein bears. That one got me. I don't know what's going on. I think there's there's some collective. I think there's some collective misremembering things. I think our memories aren't perfect, but it'd be a difficult one to test. It's a it's a fun idea, but difficult to test. And so this is the idea that like timelines get get altered. And there's some like little Yeah, I definitely remember Berenstein. That one, that one trips me out. Our alternative alternate realities of possibility. Yeah, they're certainly a possibility. But again, like, how how do we test them? And so it's it's this, it's outside of the realm of of current science. Slip between realities of is Mark Zuckerberg a lizard? Hundred percent, yeah, look at his eyes. Do you know this? No, he's not a lizard. He's just a little socially awkward. Smoked meats. But I got one. Last Thursdayism, the belief that everything came into existence last Thursday. Yeah, so there is, it's kind of related to solipsism, like the entire universe is just in your head, like everything, even you might be made up. You're just this this mind floating. So that goes all the way back to like David Hume and philosophy surrounding identity and what is known, what can be known and what can't be known. Yeah, but you still need to like eat something for dinner tonight, so act accordingly. So it's just kind of how it is. It's it's one of those ideas where it's fun to think about, but you can't you can't change your practical day-to-day existence. That's where, you know, pragmatism and neo-pragmatism and other schools of thought come from, where like, okay, the self and universe is ultimately unknowable, unknowable, but we still need to make rational decisions and continue on with our unknowable state. Yeah. So science can't explain everything. It's not perfect, but it's incredibly useful. And it's done wonderful things for society and for us. And it's it's a useful tool, but you you use it in one way. You make a guess, compute the consequences, compare it to nature, and that's that's what science is. And things that are bad guesses or you can't test, that falls outside of the realm of science. And in that that vein, you know, the the really mean scientists, they're being a little dising- dising- you know, the the really mean scientists, they're being a little disingenuous too, like I think of someone like Richard Dawkins and other militant atheists that just say that like there 100% absolutely is no God because we can test evolutionary theory and it works and we see lines and lines of it. Evolutionary theory and you know, hard creationism is therefore false. Yes, hard creationism is false, but soft creationism, it just falls outside of the realm of scientists. And I think it's incredibly egocentric for someone like Richard Dawkins to say like there absolutely is no God. It's just something we can't know, or at least me personally, I I'm unable to determine whether it's there or not. So those those militant, hard, hard scientists are actually, I think, being a little disingenuous to the scientific method too, because they fail to recognize that science is a is an incredibly useful construct and perspective, but it can't cover everything. The earth is round because if it was flat, the cats would have pushed everything off the edge by now. Definitely true. I liked some of the earlier guesses from older cultures, ancient cultures, like, you know, the the Greek idea that there's, you know, earth, wind, water, fire. It's also like in Frozen 2. I just watched that with my little girls. But 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 like, and the idea that like, you know, the winds come from the four corners like auroras and borealis and zephyrus and stuff like that. It's a cool guess, but then it's you can compute the consequences of that guess and like, well, okay, well, I'll go all the way north and see if there's a big dude up there blowing the wind or something and you go all the way to North Pole and it's not there. Other ideas like in Jainism and Buddhism, like, well, you know, the earth is on top of a big elephant and that's being carried through the cosmos. And then they say, well, what's under the what's the elephant on? And they say, well, standing on a turtle. Well, what's the turtle standing on? Standing on another turtle, of course. And then it goes turtles all the way down. So I like some of these these older ideas and the whole like. Yeah, the music of the spheres, I thought was incredibly elegant, but ultimately a waste of 200 years. And I'm sure there's all sorts of things we we have ideas about right now that are going to end up looking silly in the future. But that's what that's what science does. It advances by exposing the silliness. All right, I got a meeting at three string theory. Oh, my God. Yeah. Theory of everything, grand unified theory. So right now physics is in trouble. It's not in trouble. It's actually a really exciting time because we can't dovetail general relativity, which is the study of the biggest things, the cosmos, the the bending of spacetime due to gravity and energy and matter with the with the smallest things, which is quantum quantum mechanics, which basically says there is actually no there there. It's all just waves. And these waves can you know, briefly appear static as something like a thing, an object, but it's actually just waves flowing everywhere all the time. And so things like string theory are an attempt to to explain try to marry those two theories by saying that there's these other dimensions, 11. I think a current count that say that, you know, we're only seeing this four dimensional space and there's actually these these other eight or other seven or six dimensions that are influence influencing things. Difficult to test, right? So this is where we need to use things like gravity waves, which require, you know, big arrays that are miles long in eastern Washington, for example, or even between here and the moon to start looking at some of these these effects. The conspiracy theory that Walt Disney is cryogenically frozen. Yeah, cryogenics isn't going to work because have you ever eaten like a frozen vegetable or even like a frozen filet of salmon? Tastes terrible compared to fresh. And that's because ice creates all these little spikes, these crystals that puncture and disrupt plant and animal cells. And so, yeah, if if Walt is cryogenically frozen, he is a he's a yeah, he's a ice ice splintered mess. Thank you. Yeah, I gotta go to a meeting. See ya.